All right, good morning to everybody. Today is Tuesday, May twenty seventh, twenty twenty five, nine a.m. Gonzales County Commissioners Court will now be in session. We'll make note that Commissioner Boatwright is not present, however, we do have a call. Before we get started, I want to wish a happy birthday to Misty and our Commissioner, Commissioner Stankin. Is there a birthday today?
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. So we go a little public comment, advise if there is none, so we'll move to the consent agenda. The following may be acted upon in one motion. A commissioner, the county judge, or assistant may request an item to be pulled for a separate discussion and/or action. Have y'all had opportunity to rule for all of those? Do y'all have anything that y'all would like to discuss?
Yeah.
Y'all good?
Good.
I got a motion for the consent agenda?
Yes.
Second. I have a motion and second to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right, we'll move to number six. Uh, approve the de- deputation for the sheriff's office?
Yes, our deputation here. Ariana Barusa from the Sheriff's Department. Ariana Barusa.
See, that's the new, the new bailiff? That's our new bailiff this year. She, uh, she's actually from the college billeries, and she worked the bailiff and stuff over there.
I move we approve the deputation for the sheriff's office as submitted.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the deputation as submitted. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
All opposed? Motion carries. Number seven, discuss with action pursuant to one fifty two point zero one four of the Local Government Code. The selection of the salary grievance committee as set forward by statute and to determine which method under the LGC to be selected with a committee composed of, A, the sheriff, the county tax assessor-collector, the treasurer, the county clerk, the district clerk, the county attorney, or the district, criminal district attorney, along with the drawing of three names and two alternate, alternate names, or you can use B, nine public members to be drawn and, uh, four alternate names. So Roy and, uh, Tony, this is a deal we used to do in the past of try to get nine people. It's very, uh, hard for her to do it. So a lot of times in the past, uh, at Commissioner Presas could tell you, we, we moved to the A's so that we only have to draw a few names instead of a lot, and we have our, uh, our officials on it, so.
Well, I move.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I move that we go ahead with, um, A, you know, for the drawing, to determine the LGC to be selected with a committee composed of the sheriff, the tax collector, the county treasurer, county clerk, district clerk, county clerk, criminal district attorney, along with the drawing of three names and two alternates.
Now, second. All right, add a motion and second to go with A, which is the sheriff, county tax assessor-collector, the county treasurer, the county clerk, district clerk, county attorney, uh, and, uh, along with, uh, three names and two alternates to be drawn. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
All opposed? Motion carries. Move to number eight. We have an update from Jimmy Harness. I know Jimmy's not here. The, uh, drought conditions and the burn ban status?
Ah.
Very.
But I can't figure out this only just four seventy. I did talk to Jimmy.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll continue with the no burn ban. We'll move to number nine. Uh, discuss with action the final approval of the ranches at County Road two eleven subdivision, uh, in precinct four.
Commissioner Boatwright didn't meet with the developers. I believe it was past Monday. He indicated to Carol that he was happy with the platform statements and prepared to look for it.
Okay. Make a motion and file approval for the ranchers, ranchettes at County Road two eleven subdivision, precinct four.
Now, second. Add a motion and a second for the approval of the ranches at County Road two eleven and precinct four. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
All opposed? Motion carries. We'll move to number ten, discuss with action approval of the variance against Gonzales County subdivision rules in precinct four. Wilson?
This was one that was put back on the court per, uh, the last, back on the agenda from the last quarter. I did talk to Charlie about it. The guy is selling the full five acres out of fifty five to join in the acre. And before they tried to split it up into more pieces, uh, Charlie probably known on that. And then now it was the whole five, one, one acre.
Let's do it. Can I make a motion, approval of the variance of Gonzales County subdivision rules precinct four? Wilson?
Now, second.
Motion and second, uh, for the approval of the variance of Gonzales County subdivision rules of precinct four for Wilson. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
All opposed? Motion carries. Number eleven, discuss with action approval of exceptions to Gonzales County subdivision rules in precinct four for Nunez.
This is another one. Charlie said it's a simple two acre, about two hundred and seventy feet of variance on.
Let's do it. Can I make a motion of approval, exception of Gonzales County subdivision rules precinct four, Nunez?
Second. Motion and a second for the approval, exception to Gonzales County subdivision rules precinct four for Nunez. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
All opposed? Motion carries. Number twelve, discuss with action driveway, uh, permits and applications.
I did leave a copy of the suggested minimum allowable standards with each of you. Uh, I should stress that that's really for the inspector to go out. Uh, that wouldn't be for the general public necessarily. The inspector would go out make, uh, determination or requirement for what they need. This is just so that we'll know y'all will be happy with the very minimum. The only question really in mind still was, unless you had some other issues with the other requirements there, is the cover material. Commissioner Boatwright indicated he likes the plastic because it's smooth on the inside. A couple other commissioners indicated they like the metal because it's on the curb. So I, the, uh, select the material or should it be appropriate ones themselves that they're going to put it in, but, um, the only one to be specific.
They're going to be different sizes and driveways, or does this one say?
Coat size is going to be different diameter depending on the walk.
I'm just saying depending on how much weight they may have going over it. I don't know if that makes a difference on the plastic or metal.
Well, it makes a lot on, I think the metal one's a little bit better. They don't give up that on the ends like the plastic.
Plastic will flow down.
We've had to tie those down, ache them down, keep them down sometimes.
So, y'all, I mean, I, I think we ought to let them use metal pipe or the plastic. Just, it's kind of my thoughts on it, but if y'all feel like.
No, if it breaks, they gotta fix it.
That's right. It will be our responsibility.
Well, it depends on how y'all want to do that, you know, if it's, I think Charlie liked the, uh, smooth board because really it would be our responsibility to unplug them if they plug up, um, to some extent. Maybe if they're metal and they run over the ends of them and bend them down, it would be us that could come out there and and that thirty years from now, uh, would it be us that replaces that as it wears out? You know, either way.
I don't, I don't have a problem using either one, a metal pipe or the plastic.
Leave it optional? Y'all will go about that night?
I would, I'd leave it optional.
Optional. I'll, I'll agree with whatever y'all did to.
That's fine.
My questions are, do you want to stay with the fifty for residential and one fifty for all others? How do you want to do the fees of the, right now we have it like fifty for residential and then we go four hundred for commercial. But that was when we were helping them. But they're doing it all themselves. What kind of fees do you want to put on the residential and commercial?
I'd like to see us leave them the way they are with costs on that. Um, especially if you have like a subdivision or something, they're going to tear our roads up going in and out there, and we're probably going to have to come back and re-fix it where they're coming out on the road.
So you want to leave the commercial?
I would like to see us do it unless somebody has a better opinion.
And then tell them they need to build it? Okay.
Did you have a comment on that, Judge?
No, I haven't. I don't, if that's y'all's fault, I don't know. Yeah, it's about traffic.
I was reading one thing in this down here. It says, uh, it says here on your form that we got from, you're talking about Guadalupe County will not be responsible for any maintenance until an inspect, inspection is completed and after which this form will be mailed to the current mailing address provided. Please keep this form for your records. So we're not going to be responsible for that pipe after they put it in, correct?
Uh, I believe we would be to some extent, um, you know, if it needs to be repaired, minor repairs, that sort of thing.
Okay.
That would still be the county.
Okay.
So we have a big rain and it gets stopped up with grass and washes out. I mean.
Yeah, I was just hoping we wouldn't be responsible for the maintenance on them.
Well, what it says, says that, uh, it says we're agreed responsible for any maintenance. They won't, that we, that Guadalupe, Guadalupe County will not be responsible for any maintenance until the inspection is completed.
Right.
I guess if the inspection would determine.
That it wasn't properly.
That it wasn't properly put in, whatever, when it's theirs or something else, then that, that may, I think that's an out.
But it's, they, it should be inspected after they put the driveway in to ensure that they built it to what we told them to.
Now, if they go to, if we're going to be responsible for it after we put it in, if they go to run it over the ends of it and tear it up, are we going to be responsible, way this reads, to go in there and jack those ends up or take them out? I mean, because they can abuse the entrance.
In my experience, Guadalupe County, that is what would happen. They would go out and maintain the ends of them. Um, but that's up to you guys, and ultimately, probably don't like to do that.
Now, we would try to, pardon the width of it. It could be that they need to consider what use it's going to be used for, uh, when they're designing it.
If they're responsible for putting it in, they ought to be responsible for taking care of it. That's the way I look at it.
I kind of feel that way too. I mean, I don't want to put it back on the county again where we're having to dig up a five, six hundred dollar pipe.
Be nice if they put cement in there when it goes down.
Unless we require that.
Sir.
Unless we require that cement edging.
Cause that would get from smashing the pipe or messing anything up and just drive over it.
Yes, sir. I know the state requires it now.
Right.
Second, give the treatment.
Yep.
Some of the oil companies do it and some don't, and then you see what happens. They just.
You can drive over that. It don't flatten out.
I was looking in some of the stuff y'all highlighted, I guess, and it talked about, uh, the minimum driveway width of per, of private driveways, fifteen feet, commercials, twenty feet.
Well.
What, what's your thoughts on that? Isn't that kind of narrow?
It is. In fact, when I worked in Guadalupe County, I, this is in the subdivision, but.
Yes, sir. In ours or Guadalupe County's?
Guadalupe County.
Okay, go ahead.
We don't have ours. Something I could consider in the future, but, um, I had always been told that it was twenty foot was the minimum width, and that's what I told everybody when they asked me. I was not the inspector. Uh, there were other people that did that job. But I did talk to a lot of people and they came in to get the permits, and I always told them twenty feet because that's what I thought it was.
I sure wasn't going to go any shorter than twenty feet.
I think in, uh, Guadalupe County, they have some subdivisions that have single car garages and they're really cramming the homes in. And when those roads happen to be retained by the county, they don't do much anymore. Uh, I can see where they might go fifteen foot drive because they're only going to have a one car garage that it leads to. And I would assume that's why I asked them there.
So I would think we ought to at least have a minimum of twenty feet to get on.
That's what we would think.
Residential. What do you generally think?
I'm good with that. Yes, sir.
What about the commercial? The width?
I don't know that we would find a minimum, but we could.
What is our commercial now? Is it forty feet?
I'm not sure. Uh, that's really, I, you know, they've always come to you guys at that point after they paid for the permits, so I don't.
Yeah, we just took them and got them.
Yeah.
Most of them are old locations. They shoot sixty, eighty. It depends what direction they're coming in too. Like on the hill, they'll come in the opposite direction. They may be hundred foot wide.
You know, especially if it's going to be some kind of subdivision and they're going in, you're going to have people going in and coming out and FedEx going in and UPS going in. I mean, we need to have it wide enough.
Cement first, gravel first.
Yeah. So what is y'all's thoughts on this? Fifty, sixty?
We did note that.
The pipe are twenty.
We did note that the size and number of pipes could be determined upon inspection by the county, so, um, I definitely think that that's something that inspectors should keep in mind.
So we make that decision when we get down to it?
I think so. And if it's going to be something that, our thoughts were, if it's going to be something more than just your normal everyday driveway or driveway into chicken, chicken farm or whatever, that it'd probably be best to consult with you guys as well.
Okay. Just kind of leave it open then.
Yes, sir.
I'm all right with that to, to be determined.
Right.
That in the situation.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The other thing I, I know I always have questions, again.
It's all right.
Was all the, the, basically the procedure. Um, we would take the application in our office. And I'll go on and send it to y'all like I always have or send it to Carly. And she gets it to y'all so you can see what we're doing. And, uh, then pass it on to our inspector and my head take it from there. And then once it comes back into the office, get the copy, get a copy to the landlord. I don't know if y'all want a finalized copy or.
No, if that person's going to be doing it for us, she's going to have to set a rule to go by.
Okay.
But we would like to be able to know it's coming, so if.
Yes, that's.
If there is a problem, we can notify you. Hey, I don't know if they know the history of what's going on out there.
Right. And that's why I talked to Carly about that and going on, like I said, just do as normal. When I get it in the office, send her a copy for y'all to see.
Okay.
And, uh, just so you, when you see a driveway going in, you'll be able to see that there's a, they've already pulled a permit on it.
Y'all all right with that? Okay, what you doing?
That's all y'all. I'm doing it wherever y'all say.
Okay. I'm fine with that. It's kind of all the questions I had.
I'm sure there'll be more as we start doing it, but.
Yes, sir.
I think there's a lot of room for common sense in this.
So we're going to take an action on that driveway permit?
I guess we could, uh, take the action as, as discussed by us. Probably so they can, so trying to narrow it down. I mean, just say, um, on item twelve, just make a motion that we, uh, do the action that we talked about in the office about the driveways and the pipes. We're going to use, we're going to use three different pipes, a plastic, metal, and pipe corrugated, whatever you want to call it. And the, um, driveway permits would be like a minimum of twenty feet. Also, on a large, like a subdivision or something, y'all would go out and make an inspection and get back with commissioners. And, uh, we would decide. Also on a large, like a subdivision or something, y'all would go out and make an inspection and get back with commissioners and, uh, we would decide what we needed at that time. Is that good enough Judge?
I think so. What about the concrete apron?
Do y'all wanna do that?
I think it would save y'all a lot of headache.
Probably would. And also we, uh, check into, we need concrete aprons on the end of it.
Safety and protection.
Yes. Anything else?
Could we cover?
I'm not seconding that. You gonna second that? Alright, uh, everything that Commissioner Bot, as I just said, uh, I'll try to go in. Minimum of twenty feet, uh, covert, uh, twelve inches of diameter, twenty foot in length, uh, covert material is optional between the three. And then the, um, cement apron, uh, on the end. Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed, most curious. I'm gonna send this, send this affidavit around, we, that was in the consent agenda, we'll make y'all sign that. Alright, we'll move to number thirteen, is to appoint two representatives, uh, to go to the Golden Crescent General Assembly and designate one to sit on the board of directors. So I believe in the handout, y'all have this handout, but it was, it was, Commissioner Boatright and myself on the last ones.
Sounds good now.
Y'all moved, y'all, I, I figured some of y'all members might wanna get on there and read.
I kinda figured that too.
Kinda riding the boat and see how it sways around.
That way y'all become, become real familiar with GCR.
Yeah, I think so, everybody will be familiar with.
Everybody's got an opinion, you know?
It doesn't matter, I just.
Well, I make a motion, we leave them as they are right now, uh, Judge and Commissioner Boatright. Do I have a second for you?
Second. Both of them seconded, but I've been telling you so. There is next year.
Next year, we'll.
There is next year.
Well, you notice how they hesitated, maybe they had second thoughts in there.
You, you been telling them about all this stuff?
No, I haven't told them anything about Golden Crescent.
Alright.
I've heard enough.
Alright, we had a motion and a second to leave the, uh, two representatives as is, which is myself and Commissioner Boatright. Any further discussion? All in favor? Uh, okay. Move number fourteen. Consider and take action on bid for resale property, uh, suite six seven nine two R one eight zero zero one, parcel one three three nine four. Of a zero point two five three acres, more or less, uh, situated in the east one half of lot three, block thirteen, third subdivision of the Lafayette Place addition. In addition to the city of Gonzalez, County, Gonzalez County, Texas, as described in deed date March fifteenth nineteen eighty-nine from K K D L Host to Jackham Craven, E T U X and volume six thirty, page fourteen, deed records of Gonzalez County, Texas.
Okay, this is the one that was previously brought to you. Uh, we have received another bid. Uh, this bid is in the amount of thirteen thousand five hundred dollars. Tax years due for this property is two thousand and five through twenty twenty-four. No information has changed on this property since the last time that I brought this property to you, except for the post judgment taxes, of course, they've gone up a little bit. They're now, uh, five twenty-seven eighteen, but it was originally offered for tax sale in December of twenty twenty-four and still remains on our tax. Uh, resale list was struck off because it received no bids on that tax sale. Um, the property is still at the corner of Saint Louis Street and North, uh, Patrick Street, uh, this is the only bid that we have received thus far.
What is the, uh, actual amount that was supposed to be?
Uh, the original opening bid was twenty-six thousand eight forty-four seventy-four. This bid is thirteen thousand five hundred. As always, I will not bring a bid to you unless it conforms to policy. So as this bid conforms to the county's policy of resale properties held in trust with the amount of bid being more than one half of the original opening bid. I recommend approval of said bid pending the approval of the other entities.
So this is still that Craven property?
Still the Craven property on the corner.
Yes.
I think we still need to, as we discussed earlier, see what the other taxing entities wanna do and maybe just acquire that, cause there's some interest in, uh, through a government entity to build a building on it, which in turn, if they did that, I feel would save taxpayers money because they're paying rent right now at a fairly low rate.
I agree with you on that. Is that a motion?
Sure.
I'll second it.
Alright. Had a motion and a second not to accept the bid. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Alright. Move fifteen, discuss and consider action, uh, notice of termination of lease contract between G V E C and Gonzalez County.
Well, I, I brought this up, uh, I've talked to some of the residents around there and they came to me back in the, maybe a year or so ago in the Chris, so if you ever drive by there in the summertime and they live on the north side, the wind blows in and they get it all in their house. We own that property and we could actually use that property for our use of county. I'm just, I, I really want a soil sample done if we can get this done, because I'm pretty sure it's contaminated pretty bad with Chris, so. So, yeah, we could get that out of there and clean it up, it'd make the residents, it'd maybe no health problems start, you know, I don't know if it has or not, you know.
Does it give you a lot more room, right?
Well, I mean, it would if somebody else, one of the other precincts need to use it or if we need to use it for something else, it's there. But you, if you drive by there and I'm, you work right there with us and you can smell it, can't you? So, that's just one of the deals that came up and I wanted to put it on the docket and maybe we can do something with it and help these people out that are living right there, so.
They just, we just, we worked that lease with them here a while back, didn't we?
I think it's yearly, isn't it?
Yes, it's a year, it was twenty-five dollars per year.
When does the lease come up, do we know?
I would say, uh, uh, October first again, cause I got the check around October, so.
But don't we have to notify?
Yeah, well, this would give us plenty of time to notify.
The lease that was presented to me to review was a twenty-five year lease. That began September twenty-four. And it required a twelve month, uh, of notice to vacate, which is, I believe, what y'all were discussing with the pre-formation.
It was a twelve, we had to give them notice twelve months, I thought, am I correct on that?
Yes, sir.
Did it?
Yes, sir.
Did it have an amount, what the lease would be a year? Cause I was given twenty-five dollars.
It was twenty, I believe it was a twenty-five dollar one time fee.
So if you wanna do it, you need to start now, cause, you know.
Well, I'd like to make the motion to do that, if I can.
I'll second, go ahead, go ahead.
I'll go ahead and second the motion. Very good. Alright, had a motion and a second, uh, to, uh, notify G V C, uh, the termination of the lease contract, which I believe we have to give them one year in advance. Uh, guess that that could be effective for today's date?
That's correct, as, uh, the signing, which I believe it has your signature there, the, um.
Or as soon as they, as soon as they receive the signed letter from me on the date that they receive it, they're gonna hear from me. Alright, any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed, local carrier? I'll go ahead and sign that. Alright, sixteen, uh, discuss with action interlocal cooperation agreement between Imperial County and Gonzalez County to house out of county's inmates for the sheriff's office. Have we had anything with them in the past? I know we've had it with a bunch of different places, I just wanted to share with you this.
I thought we was gunning, we was gunning with Imperial in the past.
Okay, I, I couldn't remember.
I'm almost positive. So y'all all right with this?
I am.
Okay, I move, we approved the interlocal cooperation agreement between Imperial, Imperial County and Gonzalez County House, out of, uh, county inmates for the sheriff's department.
Second. Motion and a second, uh, for a interlocal cooperation agreement between Imperial County and, uh, Gonzalez County to house county inmates at their sheriff's office, at their jail. Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed, question here? How much room do they have in their jail, do y'all? I didn't think it was that. I didn't think it was that big.
Let Bill to new jail, they're here, what, seventy years ago, weren't they?
Alright, move to number seventeen. Uh, general update, uh, annex demolition and renovation project, Mr. Duke with C P M.
Yeah, I appreciate y'all, so if you've driven by, I'm sure you've seen all the interior demolitions done and there's no more glass to the building. So, right now, I would thank you. So, uh, anyway, right now, we're still going back and forth with demolition contractor and the engineer to, uh, finalize the shoring and the, the, that's gonna pop up here just a second. And get that approved before they can actually start the demolition of the panels, so. We had a little bit of back and forth on that, working on the details, uh, so hopefully that gets approved early this week and then you'll start to see the concrete wall panels come down, uh, towards the end of this week, probably early next week. So it's moving along pretty good. And then on the actual construction contract, last thing I'm working on is an update to the logistics plan, uh, at the request of Mr. West, which is just to, you know, make sure that he's got some visibility there, so. Uh, matches basically what's out there now, but we did that done, get the contract signed hopefully by, uh, tomorrow or next day and then, and then get, get them moving as well on, uh, procurement of subcontractors and some of us. So any questions on the annex building before we move to the rental brand?
How many of those panels will they take, those concrete panels will they take out at a time?
They basically do one at a time, so they, they have, they'll put the shoring up on the inside and then have to cut each panel loose. There's some clips on either end of it, so they'll cut those out, they'll demo one, they'll, but, I mean, it's gonna be, they'll take out multiple in a day, but they'll do, they'll work at it one at a time as they cut them loose.
And then what will they put back in there? They'll just leave that shoring up till they get them all out and then they'll come back?
It's good, yes, sir, it'll be just temporary shoring and you'll, you'll be able to see pretty much right through the building, no exterior walls.
Okay, so it'll just be the shoring holding the whole roof up?
Yes, which is why the engineer wants to make sure that it's done exactly the way they want it done, so that's the back and forth, we're working through the details on that, which I can appreciate.
Yeah, I can appreciate that too. I mean, anyway, I'm sure they'll handle it the way it needs to be done, I was just curious how they would do it.
They're, uh, W J E's getting pretty much into the details and the weeds and just to make sure that it's done, so I would, would all appreciate that right now.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Where are they at on the ceiling and the roof part? That's been removed as well or?
Um, on the, no, they haven't done anything on the, you're talking about on the roof? No, they, they haven't done any of that, so they have to get the shoring done first and then they'll start, then they'll start to work on that. So they're, they're pretty much done right now until we get the shoring approved and get it out. Yes. So that's it on the annex. It's like it wants to work, like I saw it doing. Alright, so we've got your presentation over here. So this is an abbreviated, uh, summary version of the W J E, uh, investigation. Where they came out on their walkthrough, what W J E found and, and, uh, some immediate recommendations and then, and then I've got some next steps, it looks like it's up on both screens. Can you see that? Okay, so, W J E, uh, came out and did some, in addition to just some visual observations, they did what's called hammer soundling. If you can see, they have that, see that yellow and red kind of rubber mallet in the center picture and then in the upper left picture, that's, they, they use that hammer and they went around on the areas where they could reach and they, they started tapping on the stone to see like how, uh, how degraded it is and it's pretty bad as you can see. So on the left picture is an example of some very loose and obviously deteriorated stone, they actually pulled that off in their, uh, investigation, so. These are some of the worst pictures, but just wanted to let you know that while they were up there, they removed the, the dangerous, the loose pieces where they could. So I'll get into some more. These are just some additional pictures showing representative, uh, conditions and some of the locations, uh, they couldn't get to, to remove the loose material. Mainly up on the upper levels of the building and then on the east side as well along, uh, side street. Just because they don't have scaffolding to reach through right now. This is a, a picture, I don't expect you to see all those, those dots, but they used the, like, from their observations, what they get their hands on and then what they can see. This, this just shows you kind of a, a, the different, uh, locations and scenarios with the red star being what they're considering imminent safety ha- hazards. I will say that we talked about the, uh, the scaffolding overhead protection and the, the little walkway you have of going into the building. They did say that they feel like that is sufficient for right now, that is doing its job protecting the public entering and exiting the building, so. I thought that was important to pass along to y'all, but you can see we do have a lot of places where, um, I don't expect you to be able to read all those, but there are some, you know, areas up where it's really, it's starting to deteriorate and then there's a lot of areas where it's already past the, the early stages, they're going into advanced deterioration like the pictures that you saw. Uh, and each one of those dots represents a condition, uh, with the white dots mean areas where the limestone appears to be fine and there's no distress, so. So there are some areas that are actually okay.
What is the blue, little blue dot? I can't read what it says.
It says incipient spall at limestone, so it's like an early, it's starting to deteriorate basically, or early stages deterioration.
Seems to be more of those blue dots than anything else, blue and red.
Yeah, there, there are a lot of blue dots, I'm sure. I can always come back. So, this is what W J E has said is the, is the cause of, uh, the issues, but is poor quality stone. And I don't know that that's necessarily, you know, it's not like it was bad stone. It was, well, I guess it's stone, so it's a natural product, but it's just, limestone is soft in nature. And I don't remember the exact kind of limestone this is, but apparently this is one of the softest kinds of limestone that was used in the construction of the building. Been up there a real long time, but, but due to the softness, it is starting to deteriorate. Um, and quite frankly, let's see, okay, so the distress typically originates in the bedding plane of the stone units, which is, I had to look that up. I think that is kind of as you're looking at, how it was naturally formed, so it's, you know, limestone is formed in layers, so it starts to deteriorate as it's at the layers of how it was naturally formed. They did say that the distress is progressive, ongoing. is progressive, ongoing and not predictable, and that most of the severe distress is at the upper floors, uh, the upper facing surfaces. So the ones that are, you know, on the, the tops, if you will. So the window sills is a, is a good example of that. Again, I've summarized this way down. I think y'all should have, uh, the full copy of this, which was like forty slides. You can see this is all the way to slide thirty-nine. But the, the next steps, there are a few options. Uh, in the near term, if we want to pull the scaffolding, there, there is a solution. I'll show you a picture of what that could look like, uh, which is a debris containment, uh, system. It'll make more sense here in a second when you see it. It is a temporary and cost effective measure, but it's temporary in that it has to be replaced every two to five years and it has to be inspected regularly. And there, there, there is some amount of ongoing preventative maintenance with it. The second bullet in that near term, it says pin repairs are not feasible because of stone quality. Uh, that is a pretty big deal. It means that what we thought we could do before to fix this situation was to go in and shave off some of the limes, the soft limestone and then drill, I'm going to call them dowels, because that's the way I understand this to work. You, you drill dowels in and then you, you kind of slide new stone onto the front of it and glue it on for lack of a better term. But that, that's what pinning is. So they have determined that the pinning repairs is not feasible. So, um, that means that at some point, either you keep replacing the nets and pulling off loose limestone or you move into the long-term solution, which is a comprehensive repair. Uh, that is, we don't, we don't know exactly to what extent we would have to do that or like how, how much work would have to be done in order to accomplish the long-term repair. But I, I'm going to come back to how we can figure that out in just a second. This is some, I'm going to show you a picture of this right after, but this is the words describing the, the pre-manufactured netting. There's two different options. One is a, uh, kind of a nylon rope, I guess, uh, netting. And then the other one is a metal mesh. The metal's not a good option for us because it doesn't form well over different surfaces. So this is what, this is what it looks like on another building and facade. So you can see they, W J E's actually gone in and designed, uh, or sho- shown us where we would have to put this netting up. There's a couple of options that, that they, uh, gave us. One is where almost the entire vertical facade of the, the, the main entrance side, I think that's the south side, uh, would have to be, have the netting installed. On the, on the east side, where it's mostly just the windows, you really only have to put this up in, in limited areas, like where the window sill stone is and maybe on the, the head of the window too. So it, it's not as, it's not as extensive. It's mostly the south side. But this is an example of what that netting would look like. That is a, there's a two-part. So there's a fine mesh in there that we catch the kind of smaller particles and then a bigger net that really serves as the structural, like, support of the netting in case a big chunk of stone resides in the numbers. So, so you could do that and make it safe. This is a poster-up picture of what the net looks like. So you can see that double, uh, double layer.
Does it come in colors or is it all just black?
It, it does come in color. So, uh, you can get it in a color that would blend in more, but the black is more UV resistant. So I think the, the colored kind that would blend in maybe more on the two years, whereas this black would be more on the five years. So this is the end of the presentation, but I do have some recommendations and a, a question for y'all to act on. What I would, in talking with W J E and O'Connell Architecture, what we recommend is, um, them designing conceptually of, of repair, like now that they've been on the building, one, they want to come back out, they want us to modify the scaffolding so that they can get, uh, closer to, like, actually put their hands on the upper levels of the building. They weren't able to, to reach out and touch some of the upper level of the building due to the scaffold not, not having the mason ledge on there. So, so they want us to add that so they can come back out and investigate further and take, and see how much loose stone they can pull off. And then two, we would do, uh, we, we recommend doing a schematic design for the repairs, meaning they would actually give us some repair documentation telling us, hey, if you're going to repair it all the way, this is what you have to do. And then we can take that and actually go out and get some, some hard numbers for y'all to, with relative, uh, certainty on how much it's going to cost to repair. Right now, we don't know. We, we've spoken with, uh, Michael Hunt Masonry. We've spoken with Angelosy. So the, it's, it's pretty wide, the range of the cost repairs we've gotten. So until we have a design, we don't know how much it's going to cost. So that, that'd be what we recommend, whether y'all go ahead and do that, you know, in the long term, actually do the repairs or whether you at least know what the repairs would be, but you can temporarily put on this netting and just maintain it. It's up to y'all. I do want to remind you that as part of the tax notes, which are closing this morning, we do have, um, about one point two million as of right now that we have allocated towards, uh, the Randall Radnor building and repaired in the stone. That may be enough, it might not be, but I would ask you today to authorize the judge and the attorney to be able to, uh, cause a hundred fifty thousand dollars of, of additional costs incurred to figure out the next steps. And that's what should be the schematic design plus fees for the design team and then, uh, modify the, the scaffolding so that we can get in there and get closer to the, to the building and like W J E can get their hands on a good bit of it. So that's, I'll take some questions.
The netting, what do you think it would cost to put the netting up there?
They got, so W J E actually got some estimates from a, from a netting company and they were, it, it seems like it could be less than a hundred thousand dollars to put the netting up. So it's not very expensive.
So if we put the, it just depends, I guess, what we want to do, whether we want to do the man point two, you were talking about to fix it, or we want to just put the netting on it and do it at a later date. Judges, have you put some thoughts into it? Do you? Since we're already doing the annex and we're going to do the courthouse, you want to put netting on it, hold off? And then, or do you want to just do it all?
I don't know. I, I would say if we get the cost to see what it would do to fix it, I mean, then we, then we would have an idea.
Yeah.
Uh, otherwise, we're just going to be limbo.
So we're going to have to have some cost to know.
Got it.
Yeah.
Probably for whatever cost for the netting, we would have pretty much
Schematics.
The schematics of, of some hard numbers, you said.
And at that time, you can decide to pass and, or at least you know the financial plan for it if y'all decide you want to do.
It would cost us another hundred thousand to net it. We'd decide what we're going to do for it. Maybe we would be lucky and have money left over out of the tax note to be able to, to secure the fix, fixing of it.
The way, that's a good point. The way I understand the way the tax notes are is that you can use those funds to pay for either the annex or the Randall Radnor building. So if, as it gets to the end, if it's looking favorable, you could use those savings to pay for more repairs.
So it's going to have to be fixed. I mean, the netting's just a
Temporary.
Temporary.
And every two, oh, wait, three to five, two to five years, you've got to redo it.
Come around.
Yeah, come around real often. Right.
And then the looks of it too, it's right downtown, netting on it.
Take that hundred and two thousand.
I say we go over some hard numbers.
I'll second that.
All right, had a motion and a second to, uh, what would you call that? Go, uh?
I would say motion and a second to, uh, to authorize the judge with the county attorney's, uh, approval as well to, to authorize a hundred fifty thousand dollars worth of soft costs to determine the extent of the whole repairs.
We have a second on that?
Yes.
Good with that? All right, so we have a motion and a second on that. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Most are curious. Thank you, Mr. Duke.
Thank you, sir. Oh, I guess the next thing is update on the tax notes. So y'all, that's slowly in about ten minutes.
All right, so then that moves us down to nineteen, uh, note on the available funding on the tax notes.
You should have twelve point two million dollars here short.
It's just one point. I mean, it's not like we need it today, but I mean, we'll be able to start working with it. We'll have it.
Right.
So there's no action on the funding. We're just waiting for it to flow in.
No action to be taken on that?
No. All right. Birthday boy, who's your state?
Make the motion real strong, boss.
Second. Motion, thanks to Jerry and all his family. All opposed? We're there. Thank y'all.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't see any point putting, if we're going to have the money putting that mess up. Now we keep the Burbank in, I'm saying, I keep it here.